Standing that the representation of the employee is not here yet.
I'm getting a call looking right now and wanting to answer it.
Yeah. You want to move on to other business? Or you want to stay in order? Okay. Okay, coming back out of recess, the first order of business tonight is an employee discipline hearing. And I'm going to go over the rules for the discipline hearing so that all in attendance can hear what the rules are, and then we are going to recess into executive session for the hearing. And this is an outline for personnel hearing, so. I called the meeting to order, and we had need to test the recording equipment specifically, Chris, so if you can give me a heads up that yes, the recording equipment is definitely working. And this board will have to make that decision to go into executive session here shortly. And I'm going to summarize the procedure, so everyone in the room can understand exactly what we're going to do, and there will be no question on what's going to happen here. The administration's going to get a chance to make an opening statement, and then also the employee's going to have a chance with his representation to make an opening statement. At that point, the administration's going to put their evidence on. They're going to get the witnesses are going to be sworn in, we're going to swear that all the witnesses in at the same time, actually. And the administration's going to ask questions of the witness and the representation, and the employee's going to have the same opportunity with the same witness to cross-examine them. At that point, the administration will have a chance to redirect examination of that witness, and the employee's representative will be able to cross-examine again after that. And then at that point, the board members are all going to have a chance to ask questions of everyone that's in the room that's part of this case or part of this hearing. And then the exact same opportunity will be given to the employee and their counsel to call witnesses and go through the same exact process as I outlined in the original for the employers. And then at that point, the administration's representative will be given a chance to put on rebuttal evidence, so anybody we want to call back up, we can do so, or the administration can do so. And the employee's representative will be given the same exact opportunity for rebuttal witnesses if that's the case. At that point, the administration will give a closing statement, and the employee or the representative will be given the same opportunity. At that point, we will withdraw privately to talk about what we've seen, and we're going to make a decision. And then the board will come back into open session, and this will either make a decision at that point, or as in the past cases, this will become part of the personnel agenda that's later in the meeting, so. It is how we always do these, we usually do them in executive session, people say, what do you guys do, and how does this work? I wanted to make sure everyone in this room knew exactly what was going to go on and all the opportunities given, so. At this time, this board needs to consider, when I said earlier, I might have jumped out of line, that if this hearing is going to be held in open or executive session, and I'd like the superintendent to talk to the board a little bit about the reasoning, or Jennifer, if she wishes to, what we're doing here and what our reasoning is.
Yeah, I would like Mrs. Carradine, our legal counsel, to outline why it will be the recommendation of the superintendent to hold this hearing in executive session.
This evening, we're going to watch a series of videos that will, that clearly depict certain students, there will be testimony specific to certain students and in the interest of their privacy, it's the recommendation that this hearing be conducted in executive session.
And I did. The administration had provided me, and I looked through some case law, and it is the case that it is definitely going to be, this meeting is definitely, or this hearing is definitely going to be held in executive session and to protect the employees and also to protect the children that are going to be discussed here. And it's held up in past cases that this decision can be made, and it's not to the detriment of the hearing, that the opportunity will be given as is required for us to listen to and give someone a chance to make their case and to be heard, and that's what we intend to do. But the circumstances in this case puts us where the general public will not be allowed to hear this, so. If there's any board members that have a problem with that, we can discuss that, but I think as the administrator of this hearing, I'm just going to do that.
So Jennifer, the executive session will be, people in the room will be just the ones that are testifying, correct?
Typically, we sequester the witnesses.
Correct.
So it will be the person testifying at that point in time.
I just want to make sure that's clear, that if they're not testifying, they're probably not going to be in this room.
Correct.
At the time they're testifying, they will be in a room, any other time they will be held, so, all right? We do need a motion to go into executive session.
Would you like to swear the witnesses first before we just?
Yeah, that'd probably be a good idea, so we don't have to do them as they come back in. I'd like for everyone that's going to be giving testimony in this case to come forward to the front of the room, so I can address directly those people.
I just have a question as a parent. We are here to speak on behalf of anyone but not as a witness, it is not allowed at this meeting?
It is not allowed. Okay. I suspect more people. And I lost my paperwork. Okay. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to affirm that the testimony you will give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. All right. We're going to recess into executive session.
I'll give you a motion first.
Oh, do we didn't move?
We did not.
Okay, give me a motion.
I'll move.
Okay, hold a second. On favor?
All right. For personnel, that's why we're going.
Okay. Into our delegations portion of this meeting, and I want this, to make this clear, the presentation should be as brief as possible and limited to the stated subject matter. A speaker shall be limited to five minutes. Here, I'm just going to tell you this, do not mention names, and do not mention anything that could be controversial, it could be held against you, because you could be liable for things you say here at this board meeting. This is being recorded at this point, so please keep your comments without specificity as far as staff, students, if you are planning on making statements to that. And we'll start first with William Alkire, or Alkiri. Okay, and he's here, his concern is the Travis Wells hearing. Okay, let me just read this specifically, just because I think it's very important. Speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by your comments, while it's not our intent to stifle public comments. This was also posted back here, you guys had a chance to read this, but I'm going to put this in the record. Speakers should be aware that your statements violate, if your statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, you may be held legally responsible. If you're unsure of that legal ramifications of what you're about to say, we urge you to consult with a legal advisor.
If they are not permitted to comment on him in public, they can't even bring his name up.
I just did.
They got help, but they cannot do that, so they need to understand that if they want to comment on you specifically, they cannot do it.
We can go into an executive session.
Yeah, any comments that's going to be specific to a teacher should be asked, and you should ask at an executive session to make those statements. Is what I, that's the best way to advise you right now, I can't, actually, I can't advise you, but I will advise you. So if you're going to speak specifically about a staff member, you need to ask to go into executive session, we'll clear the room again.
All right, I'd like to ask to go into executive session then.
Okay, clear the room.
Move for personnel, executive session?
That's delegation, I don't know if we need, what's, Jennifer, talk to me.
Yeah, we have to.
I need a motion.
I moved.
Second. I got a question before you guys leave the room. Jeremy Harris, Danielle Walker, Flynn Pext, and Tonya Loguero, is it the same exact thing, and you plan on mentioning someone specifically?
I personally am here in support of Mr. Wells.
Yes, yep, yes. Well, you just said Mr. Wells, that's the issue, that's what we got. Okay, anybody, so what we're going to do, we're going to go into executive session for personnel, and then we're going to come out and get you and let you come in and have your time, and then you can stay in. Instead of us coming back in and someone going through the same rigmarole, it's a little bit late for that, so let's go ahead, we'll give him five minutes, we'll be out to see you guys.
And there can be no recording?
Yes, that's various, yeah. Okay, we're back in regular session. Thank you for, to those who spoke. Superintendent, reports, discussion, follow-up action, and a facilities update on the Excel Center addition.
Yes, we have our architects of record here this evening, Williamson Schreiber is with us, and they're going to show us some options they've worked up for us related to the Excel Center additions, so. And it's been a long night, guys, thanks for hanging in there, but we're ready to see some building work.
All right. I believe we'll have a presentation up on this wall here. Is there a way to dim this half?
Yes.
Yep.
That's right behind you.
Probably.
Oh, I guess.
All right. Oh, good. We're here for kind of a quick update on the ALC Excel building, so we'll do kind of a quick introductions, I'm Greg Martin with Williamson Schreiber Architects, project manager, project architect for your building here. With me today have Ted Schreiber, he is president of the firm with an architect, educational planner, and then I have Jason Shanty with me, he's project contract administrator, estimator, kind of quality control. We'll be the three that have been involved on this project to kind of give you a quick update on it. On our agenda, we have some preliminary concepts that we brought to the design team early on, we kind of go over a couple schemes, kind of talk about our current concepts, and then our schedule and milestones. So the preliminary concepts, when we were brought and hired for this project, we were going to look at doing an addition between the existing school. So currently, you have the newest building, the ALC building over here on the right, that is kind of housing your high school students. You have your middle school students in this older brick or block building here, and then there is this metal building down in this area that's kind of a shop area, exercise room, kind of utilized for multiple things. So when we were hired, we were kind of informed that we were going to put a new facility consisting of multiple spaces kind of between these, making it one big closed campus. So when we came to our interview, we had some concepts, we were infilling here, potentially leaving this, filling out back here. After the interview, and we were hired, we sat down with the design team and kind of went through the scheme and the scope to determine what you guys wanted, and we generated some three options. So this is the high school, the only thing we're going to be doing in that is connecting to the sprinkler room that is in this back corner, getting sprinkler to the rest of the facility, since we're making it one new facility as a whole. The middle school, we're going to do minimal to that, more of it's going to be facade treatment. But our first concept, based on the program that we were given, we are going to create a physical education space, we're going to create a new general office entrance with secured vestibule, we were looking at adding four classrooms along the front, one of them being more of a pre-K-K configuration. We are looking at adding a STEM, and there's discussion of relocating the shop area, storage, and electrical kind of contained within. The yellows representing kind of the corridors, so we are separating the high school students, the middle school students, and the elementary students with all the corridors. They'd of course have access to these spaces as needed through the program of curriculum. So this concept, we're looking at roughly 15,881 square feet of new construction for this facility. Another concept that we looked at of maybe reducing the scope, depending on your budget, we're looking at still doing the elementary along the front, the general office, this PE space, and then maybe an auto shop or a STEM area as an option, depending on what they needed. Again, still doing minimal here, minimal there. And then the other option was, this option included toilet facilities in every classroom, and then the other option was only including them in the pre-K and K classroom, but then giving some local toilet facilities to be utilized by the other elementary students at this time. So when we presented these to the planning committee, they liked them, we talked about what they have available for your budget, what we truly need for the scope, and kind of concluded that this option would be kind of the one we were targeting, going to be moving forward with, that included the individual classrooms to have your toilet facilities with inside every classroom for the grade school students. So that now jumps us into our current design, so since the planning meeting, we had a site survey generated between this, these existing buildings to confirm the elevation of the floor lines between the existing building here and building there, and surprisingly, there's about a two-foot difference from this floor line to that floor line, so we have to somehow connect that floor elevations between the spaces. So we're planning to do a ramp in this location, so that we have a floor line that matches here, a ramp, and then the floor line here matches this lower level. The PE space would be at the upper level with proper exiting, and then we were talking about a kind of a safe school, secured vestibule here, a general office that would also maybe have a room that can have students to kind of be pulled out and be talked to as needed, kind of a guidance. And then we are laying out your PK classroom, PK, or K classroom here, first, second grade, third, fourth grade kind of there. And then we kind of created this other vestibule over here on the end, so that if students needed to be kind of brought in separated, they still have the opportunity for that. We have the PE classroom kind of centralized here in the middle, so that it can be utilized by everybody, because it will be more of your larger space that will have a space big enough for physical activities, basketball, backstops on each end of the main area, probably some court lines, so that you can at least have a little bit of physical activity during the day. During our meeting, we discussed, and it was decided that the STEM program was going to be more utilized for this scope as opposed to the shop program, so we converted that space towards the back into a STEM-style classroom that can be utilized by all three schools at this facility with proper scheduling. So once we had the survey, adding everything in, we're looking at roughly 12,200 square feet, slightly under that, for new construction. Kind of wondering what this is going to look like, we started looking at our elevation, so this is the existing high school building that is already there on the right. We have the, behind this will be the middle school building kind of tucked there. This represents the gymnasium, that will be kind of the higher volume space, high enough so that you could have your basketball pickup games on there. And then across the front, because we have a change in floor elevations, we're still exploring the options of our roof heights, whether they will be kind of broken up to work with our stepping in our floor line, or whether it'd be beneficial to have it as one big height. And then kind of looking at kind of a cross-section through that, and then probably the one that you really want to see is right here, so kind of an idea of what this is going to be. So the gray portions are the existing, this would be the new front of the building, and we'd have a stone facade, so that we're matching the facade that's on this one, because it was, when you guys were building that with Mylan Park right there, they were kind of replicating another building adjacent, so we're pulling that material here, and then discussed putting the facade treatment on this existing here. I was talking with Ms. Washington today about whether we need to look at metal, the roofing part of the, this portion here, and if we include it in our project. The idea is that we kind of create this element right here, tying this all together, separating the roofs with a small entrance here, and then we should have had a small entrance over here for the other one. The gymnasium and the STEM lab would be kind of tucked in the back, it'd be more of your traditional flat roof, rubber membrane, so you could put your mechanical units up on those spaces there. And then there's the discussion on the outside of a pavilion that could be utilized for kind of your outdoor classrooms. And then as you, I'm going to jump back real quick, I just realized I don't have a site plan. But as you know, here, the current traffic pattern runs through the facility here, and then down along the side here. With our new infill portion, the traffic pattern will have to be modified, so that we will probably have a traffic circle entrance here. This one would still be available, but the one through the middle of the building would not be there. So that last rendering right here is kind of showing that, that traffic circle drive around loop on the front of the building, so that your buses can come in, pull out, your parents can come in, pull out, and then you could continue out and around back on Mylan Park. Kind of a schedule and milestones. Earlier this, late last week, I provided Ms. Washington with kind of a set of documents that you kind of represented here, so that we can start doing that, but we're planning to do a design development review, to have a set of documents for her, and also go to the state fire marshal, so that we can get that under review as we're connecting through two existing buildings targeted for the end of next week. Once that has been reviewed, and we're going to continue working throughout this project, we're looking at having maybe a construction document review towards the later part of September. If everything is good, and you guys are okay with moving forward with the current design, then we're kind of targeting our advertisement period in October, conducting a pre-bid meeting in the middle of October, potentially having a bid opening towards the end of October, getting everything ready, so that on your November 7th board meeting, if this is the schedule we move forward with, you guys can award it to the successful contractor, and then get construction started as soon as possible in your December months. There will be some coordination that I've discussed with Ms. Washington about the existing facility that will be removed from the site to take care of the elementary facility. So if you didn't catch the pole barn or the metal building towards the front of the building would have to come down as part of this project to facilitate the new elementary spaces. So tentatively, not knowing how construction schedules would be going, the idea is to try to have the majority of the project ready, so that the students will be able to move in by next August. It's a little, it's a little tight, but we're hopefully with a successful contractor, and with everything that can be moving forward, that we kind of hit that target now. Things could change, you guys could elect to go with a larger footprint, larger floor plan, which would maybe push these back, and then if anything needs to be changed, or things would address that, and then modify the schedules as needed. Questions? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So since this is alternative education, we are bringing lunches up from Mylan Park, so we don't have a traditional kitchen or a traditional lunchroom? So everyone will be eating family style in their rooms, or?
That's correct, or of course, they could eat in the general all-purpose room there, but yes, this is not a traditional school, it's not a school recognized at the state level. It is absolutely an alternative learning campus, and we currently have children not within that campus now in an additional building that we are trying to consolidate and provide a safe space for all of our students in one consolidated area.
So they're going to have leadership for each segment as we have now?
We have a principal in that building, and that's what we need, is to have all children under, in one building, under a administrator.
So the low sensory room that we have at the Excel Center are, will that be able to be used by the other parts of that building, since that room was specific for that particular, those needs?
That's a great question. We're going to include that in the elementary section, because again, we want to have separate campuses. Elementary children, as we wouldn't do at a high school, put elementary children and high school children together. So this whole concept here gives us a campus for high school, a campus for middle school, and a campus for the elementary. Yes, it doesn't look like a traditional classroom setting, because we will have those sensory spaces actually available in every room, that's what we're moving toward now in all of our schools, actually, even though we do maintain that sensory room. The high school has a lot of space in there that they do wonderful things as far as sensory spaces. I call that, that office area actually is a recharge room for elementary children that need some individual time, and so is that room on the far end there. So that's where we'll provide, again, we're talking on average, a maximum of 12 to 15 students in that elementary section. Again, this idea here, as is with all of this, is these children are provided support services with the intent for them to return to their, their home primary schools.
So now ask the, be the devil's advocate, is this big enough?
I believe it is. I believe that was the whole idea, that I feel very comfortable with replacing what we currently have in our primary program called the guides program. This will replicate that and give us, plus just a little more breathing room, yes.
Because right now, we're not over capacity in the middle or the high school arena out there.
We have a maximum of about 17 students a day. Now, there are different students on an opposite day, so you might have a total of 35 enrolled students, but again, 17, 18 children are there during the course of the day.
And a lot of those students have other commitments they have to have
Yes, and they also.
For a variety of different things.
Several of them go half-days to EMTech for continuation of their program, so yes, we have a lot of space there.
And if I may interject, as you see in this configuration a little bit, that these are large rooms, so the classrooms will hold 10 to 12 students per classroom, may not have that.
If we need it to.
If you need it, but you have that space. So in a first, second grade configuration, third, fourth configuration, you have 10 to 12 desks there that can be spread out in a configuration, maybe similar to what you have here. Now, if you have less students in that, of course, you can relocate or don't need as much classroom furnishings, you can spread out the students a little bit more.
I, I'm glad we're going with the STEM, but I'm sorry, we're going to lose the, that metal building, its time is over, but there were a lot of interesting programs that came through that metal building, and for a lot of students, that was really their touchstone to these programs. So I realize you're going to figure out other ways to provide that kind of stimulation, because it was really kind of unique. That's the way I consider it.
And the all-purpose room will be utilized by all the students on scheduled different times, which will replicate a lot of what was in that building. What, again, the first view of what Schreiber has provided for us, did add an additional two rooms, but we feel that we can't. two rooms, but we feel we can use. Thank you. We can make our STEM room also inclusive of some of the activities that go on. These are CTE offerings that need to be updated with current equipment that would be appropriate for the students that are there, and I know we want to do a first-class effort of providing them with what would be appropriate for the classes that we are trying to offer.
And quite honestly, had Brookhaven, Brookhaven not been able, because it was all on different heights also, we had multiple buildings that were, and that really was able to be managed and engineered in such a way that a lot of people don't even realize how different it was, and, and your height difference there is a lot, was a lot greater than this. So, I, I feel confident that this can work.
Even cheap, like metal?
Well, that's true. That was another one, yeah. We've got all kind of interesting.
Have we looked at the possibility of taking that middle school section out and just making this one building, and making it easier to construct? It looks like a constructability challenge, I'm seeing two metal roofs going into a, to a hallway on a lower level. Is there something, I mean, this is, this is a local school that, that I'm looking at the roof system, and this looks like we're doing the same thing, is constructability.
So, you're asking if that could be removed as well as the metal building here?
Well, the metal building is from Patriot Mining back in the seventies, maybe, so you have to.
Oh, it's.
Although, I do agree with Nancy, there's some, there's some kids that live for that. I called the superintendent the other day, and I'm really going, I'm going to put this out there, because it's a very important thing for a community. I've been working hand-in-hand with Morgantown Utility Board, County Commission, Mylan Park Foundation, and developers of West Ridge, and there's some others in that, some other planning people in that. So, I called MUB, and I asked them what their schedule was. Before you can add one toilet in the Mylan Park area, they need to go into the Mon River, which means they need about $12 million. They're going to apply for funds in October or November. If they get those funds, the capacity can be upgraded. Next summer, they'll start the construction. So, we cannot build on this site, because the, because the, the forethought of, of the, of the area wasn't, wasn't, it wasn't a planning thing. Everyone talks, you know, planning is such a horrible thing, but there is no, no capacity whatsoever for an additional toilet. On the Board of Directors for Pace Enterprises, we were going to put a storage, where there was really going to be just one bathroom for, the same staff, different building, they said, no, you cannot add any construction in the Mylan Park area, at least for two years. So, as far as taking a step back and really thinking through this, as far as some opportunities, as much as I want to build this tomorrow, we, we got to look at the reality, and we got to start getting more people involved in that upgrade process. And we, I mean, it's a good process at this point, but they, they just come to the realization, they're out of capacity, and that means going under the interstate, under the river to the treatment.
Mr. Leiter, will we be able to obtain permission to build the bathrooms without, without hooking up? I mean, that's what Mylan Park is looking at, as far as the, the pool right now, they're looking at, as part of the bid for the West Virginia State Track Meet, they're going to expand the bathroom facilities at, at the new track facility. Of course, they've got the, you know, I know they've been working with the KOA campground that's coming in there, and there's some hitches there, but why can't we, why can't we put the space there without actually hooking up until they're finished? Because if we have to wait?
We're talking, yeah, we're talking a couple of years until they're finished. I'm, I'm, I'm all open for conversations, I think this begins a conversation with the utility board to try to, to try to figure out what, I mean, as they, because they won't even know till November if they even get the money to do it.
And part of that.
So, that becomes, that becomes a state issue, that, as a matter of fact, we have a delegate in room, where we got to find funding for this area, because it's such a growing area. So, that's, that's, I'm really putting that out there, just to get some action.
And part of the conversation that we can have with them is, is there is existing restrooms in that space? I think there is.
I guess they know. You're adding capacity, you're adding people.
But.
So, we, we need.
But if we have an existing toilet facility.
Let's, let's just put it on the record, it's out there, we need to start, we need to plan based on that. And I do like, I do like the actual, the separation of the spaces and making sure, because that is always a concern, but we need, we need to take a step back and make sure that we don't put all this money out there, and then MUB not get there for five years, because it's a possibility. I mean, it's, it's a massive operation to get underneath the river from, from Mylan Park, so.
And I think too, but something to consider is, because of the low capacity of students that will be entering into the building, we, we truly believe we could, we could circumvent the issue with not being able to hook up, even if it's just sitting there, there's still plenty of, of current bathroom space there. There would be no requirements for us like there are in our regular pre-K or kindergarten classrooms, because this is an alternative facility, not recognized as a school. So, if we put the hookups there, whenever they get, even if it's five years from now, we could tap into it, but we still have the availability with our other bathrooms, and still be able to keep the kids separate.
Yeah.
It might lessen the number of kids you can have there, because if you're going to manage a preschool, preschool class of, or kindergarten or first grade alternative, somebody would have to go with them.
We need, we need to get that communication started with the utility board, so we can figure out how we can move forward, because this is such a need.
And then, the discussion of complete removal of that?
Do you guys look at that?
It can be done, it just adds cost and square footage.
Well, that's, that was my question, if it actually does, based on.
Right. During the course of the.
You can build it while they're working.
Or yeah, you figure out a way to take these middle school students and put them in here while that portion, that is tore down, and that is built, and then that is tore down, and that is built.
I do like the concept, though. I do, it's.
Because how old is that middle school building?
Not very.
I was going to say, I remember, I remember when it was built, I remember where all these were, but all, are all there, but.
Yeah, I'm going to say, we were there then.
It doesn't need major work, the biggest issue with that is, is really trying to match the facade up.
Yeah, trying to just line it all up. Okay. No, I understand what you're saying, Rod, is it going, is it going to be more cost-effective just to?
Have a square.
Level it and start from square one, and just add on to the newer, newest building?
Basically, take these ideas, take these arrangements and put them down that way.
Yeah.
And that way, but again, it's whether the, the cost is available to add, I'm just going to throw 7,000 more square feet in there, I don't know if that's the true number or not, but maybe it's closer to five.
Madam Treasurer, which design concept fits in our budget?
She said none.
The second, that's what I thought.
The second one eliminates the show.
Doesn't mean we don't like the first one, but it's.
This was what was requested from the beginning, was that amount of square footage, but by the time we laid this out and started utilizing, or you're looking at cost per square footage, this was exceeding the available budget that was discussed, so that's why we came up with this option, and then even this option, which eliminated the additional toilets in the space, and providing some out here. And again, the discussion about toilets needs to be, need to occur, and then the idea of installing the plumbing to a point, capping it off outside for future connection, as long as it's under the slab, then you have it for future, as long as it's all agreed upon early on, that can be done.
Let's keep that coordination taken care of. So, thank you, guys, you guys have a long ride, Hannah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Are the board members all good?
Yep.
Superintendent Westwood?
Yes, Superintendent recommends that the board approve the Westwood Sinkhole Alpha Associates Agreement as presented this evening.
Any motion?
So moved.
I'll second, didn't matter.
We've got an issue over there related to the bleachers and, on the outside of the track between where the, the track judges sit and the bleachers. Looks like it possibly is a, related to the sprinkler system over there, or the drainage system, one or the other, but there's definitely a place over there that's, that's falling away and being washed away. So, I've been over with Alpha to look at it, they have some, some ideas on what they can do to, to get that, that up and ready for us before the football season starts, so that's, that's why this is on here, and we'll be working with them in the future on what we can do at, at that facility, if there is indeed issues with, with water under the field.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the Westwood Sinkhole Alpha Associates Agreement, signified by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Superintendent?
All right, the next item is our Epic Security Agreement, this would be county-wide. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the Epic Security Agreement as presented.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And Adam, you're here, do you want to chime in on what that is?
That is the, working to hire two security officers, resource officers, at South Middle School and Mount Air Middle School. We had, previous to this year, we had had those positions filled with Morgantown Police Department had supplied us officers that could fill in for our SROs. Because of staffing at, at the police departments, they are not able to fulfill those positions. So, through state code, we are able to hire retired law enforcement officers to fulfill those roles and meet those requirements, and so, it's actually probably a little cheaper than what our budget originally had called for in the past, so it worked to fulfill that, those needs of those. And so, we have two officers that showed interest that were retired, and we were able to hire them.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Okay, all in, any questions from the board?
All in favor of the Epic Security Agreement, county-wide, as presented, signified by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Next is the accounts payable addendum, and I need to refuse myself for the SBA training, so, Michael.
Oh, she found it, you're lost it. I guess you should leave the room a little.
You have to leave.
Those doors are getting worked out tonight.
Yeah, they are.
Will we entertain a motion for the approval of the accounts payable addendum?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any thoughts? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries?
All right, Superintendent, consent agenda.
We are down to our consent agenda board members. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent agenda as presented, to include items A, the expenditures exceeding $3,000, item B is the payment of salaries and accounts payable, item C are our student trips, item D, the renewal of our Epic membership, our participation agreement, item E is the renewal of our Epic bus operator training agreement, item F is the renewal of our Epic interventionist agreement, item G, the renewal of the Westwood SRO officer with the Westover Police Department, item H is the renewal of the Mylan Park Foundation Aquatic Center and Track and Field Agreement, item I is the renewal of the WVU Adaptive PE Program, our shell building agreement, item J is the renewal of the SHAC Before and After School Programming Agreement with Eastwood, Mylan Park, Ridgedale, and Mason Dixon, item K is the Pro-Gas Contract Extension Agreement, item L is the renewal of our HealthWorks Athletic Training Agreement with Clay-Battell High School, Morgantown High School, and University High School, item M is the minutes for July 26, 2022, and item N are the minutes for the July 29, 2022 meeting.
Any motion?
So moved.
Second. Any pool outs, any discussion?
I have a discussion.
Go ahead.
Okay, for item A, number 11, just have some questions about where this money goes. Health OCC radio ads, 15,000? Can somebody answer that question?
MTEC, right?
That is for MTEC, our health occupations, in order to get their student enrollments up, they advertise through the radio stations, the newspapers, and billboards.
Okay, and then item number 13, Interactive Webinar Essentials, 28,000?
It was not under letter A?
Yes, it is.
Under IDEA, Part B.
That's our special education trainings that we utilize through that department, and that's federal funding.
Okay.
To train our special education teachers.
Okay. And then for Part B, on page 282, vendor number 10392, InternationalCenter4 dot, dot, is that the ICLE?
Yes, that is our.
$3,500?
Yes, sir. That is the training that we work with, the company that we work with, to do the rigor relevance and relationships training throughout the system, particularly at the middle and high school level.
Okay. Did we get a bang for our buck with that company?
I believe that we have. We have consultants that's here on-site, working with us at all of our middle schools. I, I think that, honestly, this is the best payoff that I've seen at the high school and middle school level for our teacher. She works directly with teachers, directly at the schools, so it's not a one-size-fits-all training, it is very individualized to the school, and then even deeper in teachers, by teachers.
Okay. I mean, when I looked on her site, they looked like they just repackaged old Blooms Taxonomy from the 60s, I mean, I didn't see anything all that fancy.
I don't think the site does that justice, but you're right, that goes back a ways.
Yeah, doesn't look like anything new and innovating to me, but, okay, move on.
So, the program, the gas bid, how can they guarantee, and the propane bid, how can they guarantee those prices?
It's based on the rack price, so, and looking at it, it's $1.76 per gallon, and then the delivery fee will then be 46 cents, so they will add that per the gallon.
Per the, okay, so they'll, oh, so that's an additional, because I couldn't understand how they could guarantee that amount, because it seemed to be too good to be true right now.
Or too bad to be true, if it goes the other way.
Depending how, how it looks, yeah.
Any others? All in favor of consent agenda as presented, signified by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Superintendent, awarding of contracts.
Yes, first is our audit contract for fiscal year 2023, 2024, and 2025, and we are recommending, well, we only had, we had three that sent them in, we had two that declined, we are recommending that the board award that contract to Tetrick and Bartlett PLLC, the prices are listed there, fiscal year '22 at $31,000, '23 at $32,000, '24 at $33,000, for a total contract of $96,000.
For the record, there was, that 25 is not on here.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the total.
All right, any motion?
So moved. I'll be second.
Okay, any questions? All in favor of the awarding of the contract for fiscal year 2023, 2024, and 2022?
22, 23, and 24.
Okay, the agenda needs.
The agenda needs to, men, it needs to recognize that it's 22, 23, and 24.
Audit contract for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and 2024, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Did I do that twice? I don't know, doesn't hurt. Okay, Superintendent?
We are down to our HVAC Repair, Replace, and Preventive Maintenance Contract. We have provided you with the HVAC Bid Tabulation Worksheet, and the HE Newman Maintenance Agreement for the, our building environmental systems. Superintendent recommends that the board approve HE Newman to receive that contract.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question, since we now have one HVAC person on staff, I know for a long time.
Since we now have one HVAC person on staff, I know for a long time, we did this for all the filter replacements and other specific jobs. So what, what all are they doing for us?
Well, this is preventative maintenance on our HVAC system and its system wide, except for buildings that are not schools, such as this building, or any other buildings that we own that are not essentially schools. So this, we are doing our own filters. We do have two HVAC individuals on our maintenance team, but as you can imagine, it's such a huge issue that we're unable to cover all of the needs with two individuals. So this contract preventative maintenance is about making sure that the belts, the filters, not filters, I'm sorry, the belts and the, and I apologize, I am not an HVAC expert, so I'm not using the right terminology. The coils, thank you, are done every so often on a regular rotating basis here. And again, the idea is to prevent having problems and to ensure that this is done. Our custodians are doing the filter changes, with the exception of two buildings where we, they are too far above the reach of the custodial ability, so that is being done through our contract. And again, we, we, we believe we need the outside support because we're unable to hire HVAC individuals because they're simply not available.
Well, and I know we've had a good history with this company, and I feel like we've been on, been as on top of it as we can be, but I just wanted that clarification. Thank you.
Very nice. I'd like to, sometime down the road, I'd like to see a little report, what we're doing outside this contract as far as procurement through HVAC, just to get a report together, just to see. I was just thinking about that as I was looking at it. Okay, any other questions? All in favor of the awarding of the contract, I'm going to get back to the third page. HVAC Repair, Replacement, Preventative Maintenance Contract to HE Newman as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Control, control some traffic.
This is our traffic control contract. You can see in your executive content there that we are going to, we're going to recommend Raspa and Associates at a price of $24 per hour. Superintendent recommends that the board approve that contract.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So are these going to any new schools, or they're same old ones?
It's the same. And it really, it does encompass almost every school.
Yeah, it really is.
Because of so many car riders.
All right. All in favor of the Traffic Control Contract going to Raspa and Associates, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Board member updates. Anybody have anything this evening?
MPO, haven't met, but there'll be some other things coming up. I'll report on the next meeting because since it's so late, so.
All right. I have two. One's the broadband, first loop's going on the Western End, we're still working towards that. And the second one, I've already said tonight, I was going to update on MUB and the challenge with our facilities at Mylan Park. Anybody else? Let's revise us, board meeting dates.
Yes, Mr. President, we, we took a poll with you guys about the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays, just to see who was going to be available from our original schedule. And we decided to go ahead and, and change the dates on those November and December meetings to better accommodate all of your needs. I don't know if that needs board action or, or not, we just wanted to present it to you.
Thank you. We didn't want to do action.
It did not need action.
Okay, so I didn't think it did, but.
Do we have any idea when we're going to do the work session? Or have, have you gotten dates back from?
We do. What?
Yes, and I want to say it's September 20th, I believe.
Yeah, let me send that.
That is the Tuesday in between the board meetings.
September 20th. We're, we're going to schedule a work session with the board on the Renaissance Academy with the architect firm that we've been discussing. They're going to come in person, I believe.
Yes.
And be able to answer any of your questions, you know, provide you with some information and thoughts on their part, and, and we'll be able to pick their brain. That'll be the only thing we'll talk about, so we'll have them for the whole evening.
So my only other question is, has there been any discussion with any of the delegates or thoughts about if we're going to do a January work session with the legislators before they go down to Charleston?
We've not talked about that at this point.
Because the session doesn't start till February? I'm looking at you because of your, because of the election. I mean, it starts later generally, that's what I was.
When we have a governor, that's when you go back to February, when we vote on it. But we will be there.
You'll be there in January, so December's when we would need to do it, then?
I would say yes.
Okay. So we need to figure that out.
I'll be quiet.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. First item there is our Athletic Coaches Pay Table. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the new Athletic Coaches Pay Table as presented.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Oh, sorry.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Board members, I think you all realize, we have not addressed Athletic Coaches Pay since I believe the year 2007, which obviously long overdue. Our coaches have been very patient. They, they certainly work a lot more than they did in 2007 with the three-week window and all those types of things. So we, we've put together what we believe we will be able to work over maybe the next four years. Mr. Hankins worked with Mr. DeSantis and myself on this. There was a committee among athletic coaches that we worked with as well. And we, we've put together a pretty good package that we think will incentivize our coaches to stick around for a while that are working in our schools. And we believe over the next three or four years that, that we can address some of their concerns about, about where they fall in the state in relation to similar positions that they're in. So we, we think this is a great start. We got good feedback from the, from the committee and the coaches that were on that committee, so we ask for your approval of that this evening.
Need a motion in a second? The same question I asked a while back. There's 12 kids on a basketball team, 12 kids on a, and we have 100 kids on a cross-country team and 100 kids playing in track. And we're giving $1,200 to the track coaches and $3,100 to the basketball coach. That's unacceptable to me as president and as board.
The one thing we didn't do, Mr. Leido, was we did not go in and have any discussion with the coaches about individual sports. Their main concern at this point was that we addressed the overall pay scale in relation to an even, an even upbeat with the idea that we would be able to go in, once we get to a point where the board is satisfied with the pay table, that we then could go in and address individual sports if there were issues related to what you're talking about. There is, there is, you know, a method to the madness as far as why coaches get paid what they get paid. It's based on the length of season, the number of athletes, the number of nights that, that they're out. So there's, there's a lot that goes into that, and, and I'm not dismissing what you've said, and it certainly will be something that we'll take under consideration. But the, the goal of the committee was to address the, the imminent need, which was to elevate our coaches, that we haven't done since 2007.
Well, I think you also need to point out that if you're an employee of the school system, your longevity in those positions makes a difference in your incremental pay.
Absolutely, yes. And, and what we've done is we've really, the, the current system that we use right now, our incremental pay is $17 a year, which is probably about a nickel at practice.
Yeah, it's not much.
So it's not, it's not a great deal. So we've elevated that significantly. That will address some of these. And again, we're trying to create a, we're trying to create a pay table that's going to get more people that are in our buildings involved with our sports and our kids and have those people stick around.
So this is a base for each position, and then there's an incremental number of years added on to it?
That's correct. Yes. That's correct.
Well, I think the other, other thing we also need to point out to the community is that there are no Title IX issues with this.
Absolutely not.
I mean, it's, it's the same male and female.
Male and female.
If there's comparable sports going on, so.
And I do want to point out that there, there is not one single coach under the new pay table that has taken a pay reduction. We, we scoured that, we made sure that, that nobody with the changes, everybody is going to receive a pay increase across the board. And the price tag on this.
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Was 150,000, which we thought we could swallow in this current budget with the idea that we would like to look at our budget next year and possibly bring back to the board an additional pay increase under the table and not, not address the longevity.
So are we not going to look at cross-country coach and track coaches within the next year? We're saying this as it's set for a year when we approve this?
I'm asking you to set it as we presented it this evening.
But is it better not to, to hire an additional coach rather than, or additional coaches for those sports, rather than just have one person being, you know, in charge of all those? Quite honestly, when I looked at this, that's what I was thinking, Ron, was that having an additional position for those sports where there are large amounts of athletes would be the solution, rather than, because still if you, even if we raise the pay rate and there's still only one person in charge, that's still not enough eyes, or it's too much responsibility for one person, no matter what we pay them, if you have 100 students participating.
We can vote on this as it's presented. So all in favor of the coaches, let me get back to where I'm, make sure I'm doing the right thing. Athletic Coaches Pay Table as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? I don't think we opposed. Superintendent, Personnel List?
Yes. We are down to our Personnel List. We'll take a look first at the, I don't have any changes to your original Personnel List. With that said, Superintendent recommends that the board approve that list as presented.
Need a motion? Thank you, Michael.
Second.
Got a second from Jen. Any questions? Okay, all in favor of the Personnel List as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Personnel List passes. Superintendent, Personnel List Addendum?
Yes, I do have some additional information here that we need to add. Excuse me. On page one, line 11, please add the name Edsel Kayla. And on page two, line 26, please add the name Wells Travis, effective 8/10/22. And on page two, line 35, please add the name Ball Pamela. With those additions, the Superintendent recommends that the board approve the addendum.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor of the Personnel List Addendum as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
And Board Members, quick update on our hiring status. We've had, and this is a running total, Mr. DeSantis keeps me up to date on this consistently. We have 67 resignations at this point for the year, 21 retired folks, and we have 19 folks who will start the year on a leave of absence. Our teaching positions that are currently posted as we're coming down to the wire here. We have four high school positions, one middle school position, and we have 11 elementary school positions currently posted. And that's all I had, Mr. President.
Okay. Next board meeting will be 23rd, is that correct?
August 23rd, that's correct.
Okay. Word to turn.